School Committee on tonight, February 1st at 6 o'clock PM. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight and thank you to 1623 Studios for pointing, for posting the video for us. We will begin with public comment. We are expecting some tonight, so I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that this is an opportunity for comment, not debate. As our policy states, "A school committee meeting is a meeting of a government body at which members of the body deliberate over public business." We welcome the attendance of members of the school district community to view your school committee as it conducts its regular business meeting, but these meetings are not designed to be an opportunity for dialogue. We have our last couple of meetings. We have had some public hearings lately, so there has been an opportunity for some back and forth and people to have their questions answered, but tonight is just a regular business meeting. Please know that while we will not be immediately engaging with your comments or answering questions, we are listening and paying attention to your concerns. During the meeting, we will be focusing on the items that are listed on our posted agenda. If you would like to make a comment, please put your name and town in the chat. Please do not make other comments in the chat. We allow, we allot 20 minutes total for public comment and we ask each person to limit their comment to three minutes. So if you have a comment, please go ahead and put your name in the chat. I went through my whole thing and maybe nobody's going to put their name in the chat for a comment. Annie's there. Annie, go ahead. We'd love to hear your comment.
Oh, I'm sure. Um, so you know, I know that we're not going to have public comments after the budget discussion, so I just wanted to kind of preempt that. Pam, I know that you'll be talking about some scenarios for kind of coming to a conclusion on tonight's proposed budget, and I just wanted to just put in a plug to ask you to please explain for the public what's at stake for teaching and learning if we adopt one of the alternative scenarios. We have already experienced plenty of cuts over the years. I don't think people see or feel the impact until September. So most people are not paying attention at this time. So if you could do that for us and I, just for the school committee, if you adopt any of these budget scenarios, I just want you to realize that if an override fails next year, this is the budget you're going to live with. So it may be that, it may be less. So those are just things to consider and I also just want to communicate to the town of Essex that I'm extremely disappointed at where we are right now. The district came last week and kind of split the baby, and I'm sure you're going to be coming with more possibilities in terms of reductions, but this hurts and it's not good for our town. And the reason that our apportionment is higher is because we have higher number of users. It's part of the apportionment formula. So it's not something that's new to us. We've also known that this was coming for the past two to three years. We've been talking about it in every budget meeting we've had for two to three years and in collaboration. So there's no surprises here. I am not happy with the town of Essex tonight, and I don't feel that I can trust they will come to the, to the town meeting and support of our budget. They didn't, they kind of undermined us last year, and I worry that what they're doing is elongating, that they're trying to sink the override. So a lot of unhappiness here. Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you, Annie. Betsy?
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly.
Yeah, so I'm Betsy McKinnon. I'm a Essex resident and Essex parent. I have two kids at the elementary level and I'm also the president of the Friends of Essex Elementary School. I just very quickly want to say thank you to you guys. I know you've put in an incredible amount of work on the school committee to weigh some very, very, very hard choices. I am thankful for our teachers and our staff who have done so much with so, so little. And I, I do want to just publicly say thank you to our town committee members who I know are also faced with tough decisions. I have communicated that my feelings about this matter to them directly, but I just wanted to publicly say as a, as an Essex resident that I, I will be fully, and my husband and I will be fully supporting any Essex Manchester budget that is put forward, and we beg, beg for there to be no additional cuts. I, I'm not saying it eloquently. I wish I could be better, but I just, I'm talking to the school committee right now who of course don't want to make budget cuts. I just, I want it to be publicly stated that there are those of us in Essex that, that would support a full budget as is without any further cuts at, you know, our 4.2% increase, which is more than anybody wants, but that support is there. So thank you all. I appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, Betsy. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to make a public comment? All right. If you are on the phone, just please make sure you mute yourself if you're not trying to make a comment right now. All right. So thank you.
Sorry, Sarah. It's, it's Mark Renzi. I'd like to make a public comment.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Um, yes, thank you again. I know we've been back and forth, a number of the committees to understand what's going on in terms of the programs that are provided for the school. I think the schools done an excellent job in terms of, you know, performance as demonstrated by the rankings is, is one good example. One of the things that would be helpful for a number of the committees, including the selectmen of Essex and, and the finance committee, is there have been a number of data requests that are public information. We were wondering when that information was going to be forthcoming. We, we haven't received anything back in writing in regards to that. I think you guys have some emails in regards to that. So if you could speak to that, that would be great. And when that information's coming, I think it's public information that's been requested. Thank you very much.
All right, Mark. Thanks for your comment. That was actually more of a question than a comment. And we have been communicating with the chair of the finance committee and fulfilling requests as they come in. So again, thanks for your comment.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry. I, I have three minutes, don't I?
We're not having a back and forth, Mark. That's not what this meeting is for.
All right. I have, I have a public comment. I just, I just am asking whether or not we're going to get information that's been requested.
Mark, I believe that you've had, to the best of my knowledge, you have all of the information that has been officially requested by the finance committee.
I think Buttrick's on the phone and can speak, say, and I can confirm with him.
We are not doing this right now. I'm sorry. This is not time for a back and forth. This is our.
I'm just correcting, I'm correcting in public form that that's not true. So.
Okay. I understand that you would like information that has not been given to you in the format that you've requested. Just to clear everything up, Mark Renzi is requesting that he have a copy of the budget in the original Excel format, which is not published nor is it accessed by anybody. The school committee does not have the budget in an Excel spreadsheet, nor does Pam. Avi has some working documents. Atmark has the same budget, the lengthy budget.
I'm sorry. Sorry, that's mischaracterization. I'd like to clarify.
This is not a back and forth conversation. The opportunity for that was last week.
That's possible.
All right. Um, Guy, you're up.
We listed a number of things in written format. It's not in, it's not in a PDF.
Okay, Guy, you're up for your comment.
All right. I was muted. So I'd just like to set the record straight to this degree that Mark was not speaking for the board of selectmen, and I'm not even certain he's speaking as a, as, as a represent, you know, for the finance committee. I'm not certain of that, but he definitely is not speaking as a representative or, for, for the board of selectmen. Thanks.
Thanks, Guy. Al Wolf.
Hi, I just wanted to echo Betsy's sentiment and say that I know there's a lot of support among parents in Essex for moving forward with the budget as is with no further cuts. So just wanted to put my support behind that.
Thanks, Al. And Annie?
I just want to make a, or ask a question that you can answer or not at some point in the meeting. The school committee is presented with PDF format for, for, for documents related to the budget. My understanding that that is also available to the finance committees and boards of selectmen. So anything that we get is public, you know, it's public domain or whatever the hell you call it, but it's public information. We share that with the two committees. So I don't know if this is a format concern or whatever, but you know, you, you, you're getting the information. You just may not get it in the format that you want. And I don't think we've ever been given anything in an Excel document or in a, or some, you know, editable or revisable format because we wouldn't want to do that. So I would advise the school committee to maintain this, the, the formats that they have now because they're not, no one can change them or manipulate them. And you're getting the same information that school committee members are, who are the, the committee that is responsible and accountable for this.
To share, for anyone who's interested, all of our historic and current budget documents are available online on the website. You'll see on the left-hand side, you'll see everything from our grant, our current ESSER grant to our historic budgets, and there is a budget archive. We have all our OP, OPEV and retiree health and all of our audited financial statements. We update this site with each iteration of the budget as is presented to the school committee in full format along with our budget presentations. And we also have a financial dashboard, which is basically a cover provided by ClearGov that accesses all of our annual state financial reports. So you can kind of pick through that by year. So in full transparency and disclosure, this is where you can find any and all information on our budget.
All right. So I think further discussion regarding the finance committee and members of the finance committee and their requests for information should be handled through our collaborative group, which includes the chair of the Essex Finance Committee, one of the Essex Select Board members, as well as members of the Manchester Finance Committee and Select Board. And we did just meet as recently as last Friday to confirm that there were no outstanding requests. Nina, did you have a comment?
Hi, Sarah. Thank you. I did. I was Nina McKinnon Essex. I am on the finance committee. I'm a resident, certainly have my daughter at the high school. My comment was to say that I can speak as a parent, as a community member. I'm not trying to cut or say we want to see cuts. The request that I would say as a parent, I would say within the finance committee, we're wanting to know what the information looks like at the different options. A week ago at this time, the budget we came into was a 4.97% cost to the town of Essex. And then it was presented to us at that meeting that it was 4.2%. That puts a big burden on other town services. We want to know what it looks like. We, and that's all we've asked for. I don't think anyone in the finance committee is saying, please just cut and give nothing to the school. But that's what I think we're hoping, obviously, tonight will show. If this is this, this is what happens. And so I just want to put it, I guess, on the record to say, I hear what others are saying, 4.2%, it's a lot of money for a lot of residents. It can't just be that there's certain pockets because you have to think that all the other town services in the town of Essex are then really reduced because they can't be at their two and a half percent either. So it's just about trying to see the information as opposed to just going forward, making a decision on only one, I guess, data point. That's all.
All right. Thanks for your comment, Nina. Is there anybody else in the chat? There's nobody else in the chat at this time. Is there anybody else on the phone who would like to make a comment? All right. So that was kind of exciting. Diego, you are up next. Diego is our representative of our, of our student advisory board. Diego, are you coming on? I can see him.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Oh, all right. Um, perfect. Um, so I was just saying, uh, two weeks, our last meeting was two weeks ago. Um, so not anything huge, I would say, has really changed. Like, no really big issues that I'd like to talk about. A few little things. I would say, number one, um, a common like theme or I guess question among students is, um, kind of like how, like, like what the deal with the nurse's office is and like when to go to the nurses and, and if you want to be dismissed. Um, do you go to the nurse's office? Do you go to the office if you're feeling sick? I know the other day I, um, I recently got my COVID booster and I wasn't feeling good in school. And, um, my mom had told me, she was like, because I texted her and she was like, oh, I read the emails from the school and you should go to the nurse's office. And then I asked my teacher where to go, and my teacher told me to just text my parents and go to the office and get dismissed. And even today, there was a kid sitting next to me who was not feeling good and went to the nurse's office and nobody was there. Um, so I guess everyone's kind of wondering what's going on with that. Not sure if like you want to answer the question now or.
Pam, I turn that one over to you. I don't know what is happening in the nurse's office at the high school.
We have, uh, we are down a nurse. Cindy Aldrich has been out for an extended period of time. We're hopeful she'll be back soon. We had not a lot of success trying to find a replacement, and I know we contracted with a company. A contract company isn't always 100% reliable, so it sounds like the person started and may have had their own sick day. I don't know exactly why the individual wasn't there when you went in. But Diego, why don't we connect tomorrow and have a chat with Ms. Belisi and see if she can help us clarify what's going on and get something out to kids so they're clear on what to do?
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I think that'd be great. Um, a second point I'd just like to touch on. I know last meeting, uh, we were talking a lot about the COVID testing and how that's going to replace some of it. And I'd just like to say, at least from my perspective and the parents of my friends in general, like what I've heard, I think everyone's really happy about the new, um, the new like kind of test going out to everybody. And then we test like once a week or, or whatever it is. I think everyone's happy about that. Um, especially since like now people won't be having to pay like, you know, 40 bucks for a COVID test or whatever it is. Like, I think it just provides a lot of peace of mind. So that's definitely a good thing that's going on.
Awesome. Anything else that you wanted?
Yeah. And then also I know kind of like a recurring, like it always seems like there's like issues at sports games, whether it's like COVID or like, you know, people like not acting how they should or whatever. Um, and I think like, I know we talked about it the last meeting, but I just thought I would bring it up again. Like, I think the students are like trying their best and even the people that like were maybe doing things and then like got kicked out of the game or whatever it is, like people know what they were doing is wrong. So I would think that the behavior will improve in future games.
Here's hoping.
Um, do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions for me?
I always just love hearing how it's going over there at school, Diego. Even though I have a kid at school, I don't always hear. Um, you know, it's nice to have other people's perspectives. Does anybody else on the committee have a question or comment for Diego? Okay, Diego, I think you're off the hook. Thanks so much for joining us again.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah, should be a good one. All right. Um, so moving on. So hi, everybody. Uh, thanks for logging in. This will be my chair's report. So I feel like that was the most contentious public comment we've ever had. And I just want to clear up for everybody what the budget process is. Um, just, I know Pam's going to go over this in, in her presentation too. So I guess I won't belabor it too much, but we did start the budget process really over the summer. We've been meeting with representatives from the town and from the finance committee. We thought that we were at a place having done a big educational session with mostly the town of Essex, the finance committee and the select board members. And historically, the towns of Essex to come in at a overall assessment to the towns of three and a half or lower. Last year it was, we came in at three and a half. This year we came in at three and a half. But, uh, last year, if you, you might have heard, there was some fireworks at town meeting. And then this year, again, we thought that we had, we were all under the understanding that the towns would be able to handle a three and a half percent assessment, but due to the apportionment formula, it is leaning toward Essex again because Essex does have a higher percentage than they previously did of students using the school. So therefore, we've been talking about this. We knew that the apportionment was going to be leaning toward Essex. We've been preparing for it. Essex indeed did prepare for it a little bit by setting aside some cash, as they were setting aside their, their free cash from their leftover free cash at the end of last year, which was, I believe there were quite a bit. Anyway, uh, anyway, all that being said, we've, uh, the school district and the committee have been explaining to the Essex Finance Committee and the selectmen that we, that we will have to make cuts if we need to continue to further pare down the budget. So here we are tonight, prepared to make some cuts. So I believe with all my heart that really all of the citizens of our towns benefit from having strong public schools, not just the people who are using the schools right now. I think having good schools makes a town stronger. I think having good schools makes a town a place people want to move to. Um, I, I think, I know it increases home values, but for me, I just want to live in a community that supports public schools, especially in the wake of the COVID pandemic. I don't actually believe that there's anything more important that communities can do than to support the children and families of the community. As you may know, as you probably know, since you're on the call, we are currently facing a massive budget challenge, and the committee will be discussing options and the impacts of budget cuts tonight. We're glad that you're here listening, and as you will hear tonight, we are being asked to make quite a significant budget reduction. These are extraordinarily hard decisions, and we ask you to recognize that when our member towns ask us to reduce the budget, it puts the district in a very difficult position. But we do have some options to discuss tonight that will directly affect our students and families. I think it will be okay, but I think that maybe everybody's going to want to continue to pay attention to the budget as we move forward. I really invite you to stay for the entire meeting. I think that's what most of you are here for anyway. I totally understand that Diego might have to go do some homework, but we will be having this continued budget workshop discussion tonight. But for now, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from December 7th and January 11th, and the vouchers 10:33 and 10:34. And I wanted to just make a note that further description of these warrants will be included as attachments to the minutes moving forwards due to the request for more documentation regarding the budget. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved Whitman.
Do I have a second?
Second, Burke.
All right. Um, is there any discussion?
Sorry for the clarification. I heard you say 1034 and 1033. Did you say 1035?
That was from last time. I still had them in my notes from last time, Avi. Tell me the new numbers.
Just want to make sure I got it right. Sorry. 1033, 1034. And I wasn't sure if you said 1035 would be the third.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So I just forgot to add 1035. Sorry. Thank you for the clarification. All right. Um, enroll call then. Eric?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Welcome back, Matt.
Thank you.
Kate?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes, just as a question, was Eric absent? I'm sorry, not Eric. Was Matt absent for some of the minutes?
Um, Matt, Matt was absent last week, and these are not the minutes.
Gotcha. Thank you. So yes for me.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm also a yes. And that is the consent agenda, so that is approved unanimously. And then we will move on to subcommittee reports. I'm not sure that we actually have any. Is there a facilities report? Because it's only been a week since our last meeting.
Yeah, this is Chris. I don't have anything to report, Sarah. So unless you do Teresa, I'm not sure if you've talked to her or we didn't meet though.
Just to remember that we have a Essex Elementary School walkthrough to look at the situation there moving forward with planning for future renovation or replacement of Essex Elementary School. That's this, uh, next Tuesday, the 8th at 4 o'clock PM. All school committee members are invited to be there. So just as a reminder.
Thanks, Teresa. Um, policy committee. And negotiations continue to be ongoing. All right. I turn it over to you, Pam, for the superintendent's report.
Sure. I just have three quick general items to update everyone on since we met last week. We have launched the at-home testing program. You probably saw all the communications that came out toward the end of last week. So that just moves us, as I outlined last week, away from contact tracing, med bot and test and stay, and officially launches us into a Tuesday test at home protocol. We distributed the teacher tests yesterday and that successfully went off this morning. I think we began with about 140 participants with more joining in by noon tomorrow. So we can put in our next order. And we're prepared for a thousand students to launch the beginning of next week. So we'll be distributing tests on Monday, and everyone's being asked to take them on Tuesday and report positive results. So if you didn't get your email communication, everything's posted on the web. You can just email me or one of the principals and we can get you your information so you can join the program. I think we're, we're really excited about taking this next step. I am right there with Diego. It seems to make a lot of good sense. And as I reported last week, we're hopeful that, um, once we complete the launch of this, we'll be able to do as an audit of the middle high school and see if we can begin an assessment of whether or not we can make the 80% vaccinated benchmark and bring that to committee for discussion for potential relaxation of the mask mandate. So that's hopefully to come at the beginning of March. Uh, the play, so, uh, Mother Nature gave us a bit of a challenge. Middle school is hitting a lot of challenges with having its evening events, but, um, a team effort made it happen. And I have to get, give a huge shootout to the maintenance team for getting the building cleaned up and cleared up. They got their Friday night show. This was the middle school play. Annie, they got the Friday show off without a hitch and lost their Saturday evening performance to the blizzard, but our team got it cleaned up and ready to go. So they were able to do the Sunday performance, which all reports are, it was quite a success. And we'll be following that success with, um, the launch of the elementary, uh, upper elementary after-school play program, also sponsored by the Y. I believe they've prepared materials and are going to start the circulation of that information for signups. It's going to launch after February break, and we have been able to secure transportation from Essex to Memorial. It's going to be housed at the Memorial School for this year, and we'll go to Essex next year and they'll alternate locations for every other performance. But we're excited. We've been talking about this for a long time. COVID delayed a lot of the plans, but we should be, I'm going to knock on wood. Hopefully, everything will stay the same for the next two weeks, and this will finally be launched. So I know everyone's excited about that. And, um, we have the concert tomorrow night, the middle school concert, and I don't think there's any weather that it will be prohibitive of it. So we're excited about those everyday normal activities that have been put off or reorganized for so long, and hopefully we're on the path to just getting back to normal in terms of celebrating our student work and their performances. So very excited about that. And other than that, it's pretty much been, uh, budget, budget, budget. So whenever you're ready, we could probably just jump into that conversation. I don't know if we have a CPAC rep here.
Yeah, I don't think we have anybody from the CPAC here tonight, so I think we can just jump into the budget discussion. Great. Just give me a.
I'm here.
Oh, you are?
It's Christine.
Christine, I didn't see your name. I looked for it.
I just, I, my kids were using it earlier. I think, I, I never know what name's going to come up with this, so.
Oh, that's perfect. Great.
Yeah. So we have a CPAC meeting this Thursday night at 6 o'clock. Um, and then I think it'll be next month will be our parental rights presentation. And from there, yes. So Thursday night, we've already sent out a few announcements about it, but that's all.
Christine, I'm so glad. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Yeah. And Christine, make sure that you, I don't have, I, I tried to like email you today to ask if you were planning to come, and I didn't have your email. So let's make sure we connect before the next meeting.
Sure, definitely. I'll send that along.
Okay, awesome. Okay, Pam, over to you, and we can start the budget workshop.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to take a few minutes to just give some background information in case we have new folks joining the conversation. I think it's really important, listening to some of the public comment, that we really set the context that this year's budget discussion, reductions, use of reserve conversations, isn't a one-off. This has now been five continual years of this ongoing discussion. So I want to make sure if people are just joining in, they have a little bit of the history, so they know that it's just not a one-time problem. And it won't stop after this year, even if we put measures in place. I think this apportionment issue is going to continue to challenge us for the life of the district. And I think we've started some really good conversations about how we can more proactively manage potential swings. And I think we can revisit that toward the end in terms of some next steps. So if you're just joining the conversation, at this time last year, we were starting to talk about the need for some structural correction going forward and that we were getting to the, some key decision points as to whether or not we needed to restructure our program to bring down costs overall or whether or not we needed to begin to have a conversation about seeking additional revenue. I think this year, we're revisiting that structural challenge. And as I just mentioned, we have the apportionment issue as well as some expanded obligations in health insurance and out-of-district placements. So some things are compounding to make it very difficult to live within the three and a half assessment that we've agreed to. But the enrollment shift is causing even greater pressure on the district to bring that three and a half assessment rate, and we'll talk a little bit about what assessment rate means in a second, down even further. So beginning last year, again this year, we're talking about how do we shrink either the program or find a way to utilize outside revenues to bring down the cost of how the schools run to town? And that's where it's important to just have a few things in mind. Our operational budget is, it's very straightforward. We are overwhelming majority people, and people are programs. We have a foreign language program. The foreign language program is very light on materials. But, you know, we do need people to run it and do the teaching. So that's one of the challenges we face, for 80% personnel and benefits. Long story short, our operational budget is managed to maintain stability and predictability. It's really important for school to know with some certainty what the budget's going to be from year to year so we can make appropriate decisions about program and offering for students. We manage annually to the things that we can't control. We make, we try to make proactive decisions in other areas to be prepared for swings in healthcare costs or out-of-district placements, things that we cannot control but we're mandated to spend money on, always keeping that target of three and a half assessment in our sights. And the three and a half assessment means that our growth translates to a three and a half process assessment rate to both towns. That number then gets passed through an apportionment formula, which can cause it to swing higher or lower depending on your piece, your enrollment size, and what that means proportionately to the size of the district. That's what causes a lot of stress for the towns. Even though we may be coming in at the agreed-upon number, the way it plays out can be a little different for each of the communities. And historically, we are just shooting for level services. That being said, once we've established a level services budget, have it adopted, we're always looking for efficiencies and new ways of doing things. But what we're trying to do is if we're going to cut a program or have a structural reorganization, we don't need to grow or expand the budget to do it necessarily. But if we can maintain a stable FTE, we can move things around within that, within that existing budget to create new opportunities by phasing out older ones. Where we are right now is any cut, reduction, or reserve that we use, we're basically limiting our options for trying to either innovate or create or phase out and bring in new opportunities because we're just taking things straight off the bottom line. So we are in effect reducing the overall size of the budget in the overall program. So just the key terms for people who don't pay attention to this all the time. Spending growth, that means the growth of our budget year over year. Assessment is the percentage of dollars that the dollar increase charged to Essex and Manchester after we take out state revenue. Right, so we get some dollars from the state. That comes right off the top of our spending, and the rest gets passed through the apportionment formula in layman's terms, basically split the bill at the end of the day between the two towns. Just a quick graphic. We are 86% town assessments and 14% state funding. So chapter 70 is typically an unknown for us. But obvious modeling has us to within dollars each year, and we are pretty much at a flat rate. It grows at about 1% to 1.5% annually. So we do not see much in the way of growth here. What we are benefiting from is a stay-put or a hold harmless, which isn't necessarily reducing our chapter 70 for any reductions in enrollment. And we know that we spiked to a 20% enrollment increase in the early 20 teens, and that has slowly come back down to where we were probably in about 2008. So this is just a quick picture of where we get our funds. Also shows you a graphic split between chapter 70 and then the assessments to the two towns with Manchester being in the blue and Essex being in the green. We typically run at about that proportionate spending, proportionate split in cost historically. It bobs and weaves a little bit, but it hasn't really changed too drastically over time. As we talk about cuts, budget architecture is really important. First, capital. So things like investments in the field, roof replacements, boiler replacements, that's all from a separate budget that we keep from the side. So all the costs of the new building doesn't flow through our operational budget. And most of our capital projects are trying to flow through reserves. So that's on a set aside. Our operational budget, if you think of it in three tiers, we have required spending. So things that, even if we wanted to, we couldn't cut. You have to have your core curriculum as put forth by the state. You have to offer special ed services. The special ed services have to conform to the IEP. There's other mandated spending, example around ELL or high-need students. So we have required spending. And then we have preventative spending or common practices. We did a whole presentation first meeting in January on some examples of our preventative spending. So that's the buildup of the in-district programs to serve our students in the least restrictive setting with the best possible program we can offer them so they don't have to seek education outside of the district. That's preventative spending. Common practices, things like our AP elective program. We're not required to offer that. If we didn't, we would be putting our students at disadvantages compared to our neighbors. We have a very robust AP program. Things like our elementary foreign language program, our specialist program, arts and music, athletics. Those are discretionary areas that you can, you can customize to what you want. But you typically look at your region or comparable schools to ensure that our kids are having access to similar programs to other students in the state or the region. So this is going to come into play when we talk about cuts because it sounds like a broken record because we have very similar recommendations each year. And it's because they come out of this common practices but not required, our discretionary area. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So just some background to give you a sense of where we are or kind of what our history is, how we're structured. So you can think about these things as we talk about cuts and why certain cuts may be coming up over and over again, why certain programs seem to always rise to the list. One other thing to keep in mind is that three and a half, you're going to hear us coming back to that over and over. That's our agreed-upon target goal of where we try to bring assessment in. So this was brought up in the beginning. In December, we present the tentative budget, and that's typically our high watermark. In the past couple of years, we haven't even brought forward our recommendations from principals for new staff or expanded program because we know we're starting in a deficit position. Again, also key to keep in mind, this year's budget reduction is being done after five years of previous budget reductions. So the total gap that we've closed over time is close to $2.7 million to ensure that assessments are in that three and a half or lower range for towns. What we did from December to January this year is shown on this slide. We revised the operating budget to 28.84 million. We brought operating assessment. So if I keep saying to you that the target is 3.5 assessment, at this point in our budgeting, we are down to 2.78% assessment. And then that passes forward to the town, leaving Essex with a 4.2 and Manchester with a 1.9 growth rate in apportionment. So now we've brought our target rate down to 2.7. We're doing that through a series of reorganizations that are creating a long-term liability for us. And that, I'll talk about that in just a second. And then the capital budget, again, not going to talk too much about that. That operates on its own. So these are the things that we did from the tentative budget to get to what's on this slide prior to tonight's discussion about cuts. So the first thing we did was we revised assumptions. That means in the original budget, we are projecting up to potentially over $340,000 of out-of-district expenses new to the budget in FY '23. What we did to try to manage the sharp rise in cost that's getting passed on to the towns is reduce that by 50% and assume that liability through our reserves. So we've earmarked, so to speak, $170,000 in reserves should we realize the full $340,000 in out-of-district placements next year. So what we know is that we need to have that money on hand and that we need to be prepared to build it into the FY '24 budget should the projections become actuals. To go along with the out-of-district reduction, we also took about $30,000 in transportation for special ed down, assuming that that might go down as well if we realize less heads out. And then we've already taken out our, our known staffing change savings. So if somebody may be retiring, we bring people back at M5. So if somebody goes out at max 15, we're going to bring them back at M5. Savings from that right now is projected to be $57,000. We decided that it would be a good time to activate the OPEB fund. It's designed to offset the cost of retiree health as not to cause reductions in the general ed program. So we are going to be applying $150,000. Another form of alternate revenue, AKA reserves, going to offset the cost of our budget to the town. Then we're going to utilize stabilization for some small facilities, capital projects, small things that we do over the summer to just keep the buildings up to date. We'll draw that down right from stabilization. That's another savings fund that we have. And then we're fully utilizing SER 3. We rewrote the grant to support staffing and COVID, and staffing needs brought on by COVID. So we will carry a high school adjustment counselor and the IT tech in the SER 3 grant. That's in addition to the math interventionist that was brought onboard in January to address COVID learning loss. So that's another $122,000 that needs to find its way back into the budget from FY '24. Service reductions, we have summer work. That's everything from guidance, counselor, summer work, special ed, team chair, summer work, and custodial maintenance summer work. We're going to run at 50% and try to tighten those hours and reinstate the monitor staff, that's our recess monitors, lunch monitors, to pre-COVID levels, assuming that we're going to go back to some level of normal to open up the school year. We're increasing school choice, and we're going to target the middle school. That's a place right now that's experienced enrollment runoff. So the bubble classes have passed through. They're coming back to a normal state. Interesting thing about the middle school, because of the way the facility is structured and the teams are structured, they live with enrollment for better or worse. So when they had classes of 130, they still operated with that same five-person team at each grade level. And now that the grade levels are coming back down closer to long-term average around 110, that same five people experience the dip in enrollment. So at the middle school, there's really not any way to reduce classroom teacher enrollment to fluctuate with the highs and the lows. We did try an alternate model several years ago of adding like a teacher that swung between teams, and that lasted a couple of years and was found to be ineffective. So for better or worse, high and low, we have just those core middle school teams of five handling the enrollment. So that's one, one reason you don't really hear us talking about when we talk about cut packages or potential reductions, adjusting staffing at the middle school for enrollment. What we're going to do to offset the decline in enrollment is target the middle high school grades six to nine for increased school choice students. And we're looking to add 15 school choice students and hope to raise additional $75,000 in revenue. And then we're looking at an overall increase in fees, athletics fees, parking fees, rental fees to try to bring in a little bit more cash to just offset some of our costs. So I think how we got from December to our last meeting was through a combination of fees, alternate revenues, and pullouts from the budget. Not any real direct cut to the program. But I think what I want to voice is an area of concern is we are, we are creating a liability of reserve usage that if we don't correct the funding stream, meaning assessments from the towns, this at some point will either need to be addressed in the budget through cuts or finding a long-term alternate revenue source. And maybe we can study significant increased school choice over time. We have some other suggestions of things that we're going to look at tonight. So just kind of sounding the alarm bell that we were able to reorganize how the budget is structured to bring relief to the towns, but we really haven't solved the problem long term. We really are just pushing it out and hearing more conversation about the need for an override. This is just a quick snapshot of how we brought the different key categories down. And that kind of brings us to, if we're still looking at, if we're already at 2.78 and we're looking for another $170,000 in reductions, how are we going to get there? So what I offer you on this slide is an example of how we've got there in the past. It's a little hard to see. I'm going to try to blow it up a little bit. But this is our historic set of cuts. And you see that we have, over time, hit staffing as much as we could. You'll see that in 19 and 20, we took significant reduction in staffing, equivalent of five and a half teachers. You're going to see that as often as we can, we take retirement replacement offsets. Some years, more significant than others. I think we have, we're carrying about 50,000 now and a projected additional 30,000 into tonight's revisions. We've instituted hiring caps. We've nipped and tucked supplies and materials. We use our reserves to offset capital whenever we can. I'm not going to read you the list. But what I want to show you is that we're coming into tonight's set of cuts having used a combination of cuts and reserve usage that totals $2.79, $2.7 million over five years. So those are things that are either not funded, funded alternately, or taken out of the budget. So that's our starting point for talking about how do we reduce tonight? And for those who keep, who have asked the question, how come enrollment isn't impacting staffing? It is, and you can see our direct staffing cuts right here in the staff reduction through attrition line. We've taken them through attrition where we can, which is if somebody is retiring, instead of cutting someone and forcing them out of a job, we try to ask people to do jobs differently. So we may experience a reduction in a classroom teacher through a retirement. And we've done things like ask teachers to teach across buildings as opposed to replacing an entire 1.0. So we've gone down, I believe in the 2012 to 14 time period, we had 19 sections of classrooms at Memorial School. Next year, we're on track. time period, we had nineteen sections of classrooms at Memorial School. Next year, we're on track to have fourteen. So that's where the direct general ed classroom reductions have come from. What I explained at an earlier meeting is we have been taking enrollment reductions through the general ed classroom, but we've also been experiencing a need to increase staffing in our special education areas as we documented and explained through the process of building in-house programs, which ultimately the investment in the additional heads there has allowed us to save upwards of a million and a half dollars overall in our budget that otherwise may translate into additional out of district placements. So it's been a trade-off. We've had some gains in enrollment reduction on the general ed side. But many times those positions have also gone and allowed us to invest in high-quality programming in the special education area to keep our students in school. So what we've essentially seen over time is although we've had a reduction in heads, we've had an increase in need, whether that need be identified special education or intervention in reading supports, those needs and those services have increased. So three and a half is our target. We try to make it stable over time. We have a history of cutting going back to FY eighteen when we experienced a twenty eight percent insurance rate increase followed by a sixty percent insurance rate increase. None of that passed on to towns. In twenty, we began reserve usage. It was a, it was a post-budget discussion through collaboration where Essex found itself in need of some assistance. I think they had some unanticipated OSHA costs. I recall we had new regulations at the time. And they asked us after we had passed our budget whether we could find a way to bring that budget down to help them address their problem. And I think that the committee unanimously agreed to utilize a hundred thousand dollars in reserves to bring the assessment down that year so that they could feel some relief. We, I think, engaged in full disclosure at the time that once you begin that hundred thousand dollars, we probably will need to carry, carry it through for future years unless we find a way to replace it or increase assessments above our agreed upon target for a year. So that has become a carry-through and additional reserves has, we started to use them in twenty one and twenty two when the conversation shifted from reductions we could take to maintaining the program through COVID and wanting to be in a strong position when things came back and it became normalized. So I say all this, I give you the background context so you know that tonight we're not just talking in a vacuum about cuts to just get through this year. We've been just getting through the year for five years. I think we need to have a long-term strategy, even if we decide on some short-term cuts or changes to make to to get through the moment. If we don't have a long-term solution, we are, we have that outstanding nine hundred thousand to a million dollar liability that if there isn't revenue to address it, those will turn into drastic cuts for the district. And I'll talk a little bit more about that after we look at some potential direction for this year. I'm experiencing a little bit of a freeze, so just give me a second. One more thing to keep in mind, remember to get this is important to know, the way the apportionment formula works, for every dollar we're asked to reduce to assist a town with a set with apportionment, we need to cut three times the amount requested so that the way that cut rolls through apportionment gets to the desired result. So if a town wants to reduce apportionment by fifty thousand dollars, we're going to need to cut a hundred and fifty thousand to get there. That's just something to keep in mind as we're going through. Just a little slow to advance. So things that I think we could look at, and I don't think we should make any decisions tonight. I put together a few categories of potential cut areas or restructuring areas for this year for future study. And one that we're already working on and that's coming to fruition. So we can kind of put that one in the bank. One thing to note is typically we tune assumptions in January and February. We really have no greater, we have no better information about healthcare now than we did back in December. I think Avi's watching the reports as they come in monthly. They're not strong and the, what we're anticipating is a swing of three points either way. More likely than not, the higher swing would be up than down. So we haven't done anything with the healthcare line, but as we're putting our package together, we're thinking about the fact that if a point is approximately, don't quote me on the, I'm not going to quote an actual number, but it's approximately forty to fifty thousand dollars. A three-point upward swing could land us in another, I need to find another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to keep the assessment where it is today. So just having that in the back of our minds as we go through some of the areas that we, we could find some savings. Start with operation reductions. This year we went down a bus run. They consolidated services because we had, I believe they were having some staffing problems at the beginning of the year. I don't know that it's optimal, but we've lived with it for the year. So we're going to recommend continuing with the bus run reduction through next year with a targeted savings of fifty thousand dollars. We're going to propose for discussion that if you think about that triangle chart of things that we don't have to do, but we do because it's common practice or in the best interest of our kids, but it's, it serves a small number of students or it doesn't, isn't a mandated cost, the late bus is one of them. We can debate whether or not that, what the cost benefit on that is, but that's something we could address. And then we are anticipating another thirty five thousand dollars in tied savings, tied just means staff coming and going. Staffing and program reductions. Note here, all reductions, I'm always going to try to get them through attrition if possible. I think that's the proper thing to do. But if we can't, we will then typically how staffing reductions work in a school is seniority can no longer be the primary driver, but it does play a role in decision-making when, when cuts are taken. So typically younger staff members are bumped out of positions when we have to just make a direct cut. So we could look at eliminating an elementary classroom teacher for next year, that would bring the sections down to fourteen at Memorial School. Essex is pretty static. It runs on two sections per grade level. There is no full class size number that would allow us to take that down to one. The numbers at Memorial would allow us to go down one more section. It would put pressure on the upward, on the higher end of our benchmark. And I think we would need to be prepared to see classes in the twenty two to twenty five range, potentially higher than that because we really have no lens on what student move-ins could be over the summer, so new enrollment. This has appeared on the, on the chart before. We have a program, it's a completely discretionary program. At the elementary level, we offer foreign language exploration from grades K to six. We could look to eliminate that and just begin the formal program in grade seven. That would mean likely an impact to a teacher collaboration time. It would allow us to still fully maintain our contractual obligation for a prep period per day. And at this point, it's, I think, a program that we like to offer to kids in an increasing international world, the more, the more access they have to language development, the better. But I cannot tell you that I have data to support the program or its outcomes either way. So at this point, it's it's in that discretionary area where it would not be impacting the core. In fact, it would return some time to core instruction, which could be seen as a benefit in the post-COVID years. So that's an area we could look for a reduction for. We currently offer in that discretionary air area, and I think our neighbors at Ipswich do it, but I'm not sure what other schools do. Currently, we offer instrumental music lessons as part of our school day. We carry approximately point seven F T E, so full-time teacher to provide those lessons. Families need to rent the instruments, but the kids are pulled out of their class during the day to attend lessons. We could move that to a fee-for-service model and have the lessons be provided after school for a fee. So we could still provide the teacher and the instrument rental access, but we would look to pay for that teacher through fees. That would allow us to remove point seven from the budget for about thirty five thousand dollars in savings. So those are kind of the first tier things that I would look at to do this year. The bottom category are things we're either already working on and they're going to timeout well for us to see some savings next year. The savings was originally, was originally intended to go to support the intervention specialist once the S R money ran out. So we will have to find a solution for that a little bit later down the line. But the elementary principals, along with the interim curriculum director Angela Bick are working on a restructuring of the elementary intervention model. I'm happy to have them come in and take you through what those changes will be. That's not the purpose of tonight. But we're shifting and looking at the MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support model that Desi has provided towns. And essentially, the basics of what will happen is right now we have reading specialists and math specialists that have stationed each building. They'll all become district-wide personnel. And instead of adding students to the teacher's load based on the F T E that you have, there'll be a district-wide team with a common set of benchmarks that will establish the number of students who need services and then deploy the personnel to the buildings to provide them based on the student needs, not the available personnel. So everyone will become district, they'll be fluid, I believe trimester to trimester based on the data analysis. And what we think that's going to allow us to do is reduce one point two TAs in a current tutor that we have providing some additional intervention services. So we could be looking at a seventy thousand dollar savings there. That's going to happen. Regardless of the cut. So this is something that we're doing to improve the program and to be more efficient with our use of staff. But I've included it on this list because it is a way to realize some budget reduction. Again, I should have asterisked it. This was really going to be the pathway for sustaining the math intervention specialist that we brought on board with the S R funds to address COVID needs. Again, we'll figure out a way to do that hopefully down the line. The, the next one is a little bit of a multi-year restructuring concept. Given the volatility of the budget right now, my recommendation is that we're going to continue with the interim curriculum and technology director for next year. And we're going to look at two levels of restructuring. We've been working on ongoing central office administrative support restructuring plan, which we should be prepared to bring forward to you on three twenty two. I'm not positive yet if there'll be any savings in that. But we do think we can get greater efficiencies. If you looked at our audit reports over the past few years, we are basically understaffed in central office in terms of accounting support, administrative support to the business office and higher-level H R. Our original plans before we got into, you know, kind of the cyclical budget issues was to expand the staffing and to bring in some additional support. That clearly isn't in the picture in the near term. So we are going to try to achieve a higher level of support by reorganizing existing positions into a new model similar to what we did at the middle high school with the dean roles a few years ago. So we should have a little bit more information for you on that in March. And then I'm proposing that we study the entire K-12 instructional leadership model and target December of next year to coincide with tentative budget, a potential full restructuring of the district-wide leadership principals and directors to see if there is a more efficient model. If there's any cost savings or similar to the central office reorganization, if we can achieve additional skills and support that we're in need of by splitting up some of the roles that we have. For example, it's emerged through COVID that one of our critical need areas is some very high-level technology support, something in the realm of a chief information officer. It would be a direct add to do it to the budget right now. Can we get there through reorganization? So again, don't have anything fully formed, but I think it's worth a study. And the, the worst to come from it is that we confirm that we have an efficient model and it is the one that we want and we carry forward. The best that can come from it is an innovative new way of organizing leadership to better achieve our strategic plan. So I think that one's exciting and I think it has a lot of potential. By staying with the interim, this is a very preliminary estimate. Has a potential to go up, but we'll get probably at least twenty five thousand dollars in savings. It may help to facilitate also some of the reorg moves that we would be looking to make. I plugged in, we've already accounted for an additional seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars in reorganizing our budget to bring it to a grand total of a million point one in savings through cuts, reserves and restructures. One note, and we don't have to get into it tonight, but in, in thinking about this and in thinking of different models that exist on the North Shore, it may not, it may be to, maybe in our interest to look a little bit beyond the budget and explore a potential expansion of regionalization or the union concept similar to tri-town with some of our Cape Anne neighbors. I know we were approached several years ago by Rockport. We were just beginning the building project. And we did not engage in the regionalization study. But it may be a time to reach out to them and see if there's opportunities to come together on some of the services. I look at this, I know we have very passionate students and parents who would love to see us expanding our arts programs. I personally would as well. I don't, we don't have the resources to do that right now. Do one of our partner, do one of our neighbors on Cape Anne have a way that they could work with us to improve the quality of those services for kids in our district by partnering on things. So that's just a really big picture idea. I know we're all struggling with budgets in the region. Is, is there a way that we can join forces for better outcomes? What I've given you is a bit of a, a brain dump of potential and possibility. So I'm going to turn it over to you in a second. This is just a summary of the points that I made about the pros and the cons of things. And then I'm going to leave you with some concerns and considerations and then I'm done talking and want to hear from you on what your thoughts are. I cannot stress this one enough. The whole package of everything we've done to try to bring that assessment number down leaves us with a, with a nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar problem for this year. If we take some of the cuts on that list, let's say we take a classroom teacher cut. The likelihood is the, is that the lasting, that will last a year or two before we're now talking about potential enrollment increase. So at some point, it will likely need to be brought back. So everything we're doing essentially puts off the big problem that we're trying to solve that we started with, which is we have a liability of about nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that does not have a recurring revenue source that we've hobbled together a response to, but I don't want to leave people thinking that we've magically solved the problem. We've put off the problem. And the solution is either truly making some structural reductions to find permanent savings of a million dollars in our budget. Or it's working with our partners on the town side to pursue a revenue correction that allows us to kind of get back off of reserve use and short-term solutions and allow us to reengage in trying to build a stable, long-term budget that lives we think around three hu, three and a half, always trying for lower. But that would be the number that nine eighty-five becomes the baseline for an override next year. There is no way around, we can look at a lot of restructuring, but even restructuring is a different way of saying we need to look at people and benefits because we're eighty percent people and benefits. And typically the number of heads translates into maintaining our class size benchmark and retaining the level of mandated services and counseling and emotional support services that we've either, that we've agreed through, through presentation to the school committee or that we've been asked to pursue, change and evolve through our strategic planning process. It's probably worth noting that throughout the strategic planning process, there were no indicators. And people who are on that group, you know, can surely And people who are on that group, you know, can surely say if they saw it differently. That people wanted a direct reduction in services or thought that we were offering too much or the class sizes were too small. So the only way forward, if we have to take out a million dollars is to. Reduce the number of programs and reduce the number of people we have working in the district. Through across, and that is across all employment areas. And then a reserve usage carries us, if we had a failed override, that's my other caution. If we put all our eggs in the basket of we're going to plug it with reserves this year. We're just going to deal with the short term because we'll be able to get a revenue correction next year. If we fail with that, then we do have to solve that $985,000 plus problem on the spot. If we have to do that, I don't see a path forward for field replacement. Or some of the other capital investments that we've outlined in earlier presentations that are on a capital plan. That's just going to have to kind of go into a stay put category until we get the budget stabilized. We may need to seek an alternate funding source. And then on the heads issue, the, the 900 to 1.2 is roughly, if you use the $85,000 average teacher salary. Not saying that it would all come from teacher cuts, but you're looking at 11 and a half to 14 FTE out of the gate. Believe 14 FTE is roughly 10% of the overall teacher force. And we would need to find an additional $200,000 in cuts just to address. Potential unemployment insurance costs that we would incur. So the likelihood is that the four, the 11 and a half to 14 heads to address a million dollar restructuring. Would land us with close to 20 people exiting the system. In order to fund that. So that would, I think, mean, that's very drastic change. And how we look at the work that we do and the way we deliver services. So that's the, the problem we're trying to solve, which is how much short-term do we do and how much risk do we take on for the long term? So I will turn it over to you. For discussion and sorry I went so long.
No, thanks Pam, I think that was good and very thorough and I appreciate that you gave the history. I mean, I feel like I've been on this, I have been on this school committee for eight years and we've been making cuts every year. And so here we are examining them all. And so just to, to summarize, if we, we need to have an override next year regardless. If we make, if we choose, if we were to choose not to make cuts and take it all out of reserves. Then we would be immediately off the cliff if the override didn't pass. If we agree to make some cuts instead of trying to stem it all with reserves. Then in the off chance that the override does not pass next year, we have a year that we can get by and work on getting an override passed. For the following year, which would be fiscal year 25. And I have to say, we were here in this same meeting at last year. It was different because it was still COVID, it was pre-vaccination and we didn't know what grants were coming in. We were, had already taken our, you know, a million dollars out of reserves for COVID and weren't sure if that money was going to be reimbursed or not. So we were in a different place last year a little bit. And last year we decided not to take out more of reserves to reduce. To below three and a half percent because we felt that three and a half percent had been the ask and we had come in at three and a half percent. And we all agreed to that and we agreed to that afterwards in our collaborative meeting. But then at the 11th hour. At the Essex Town meeting last year, we did have a number of finance committee members stand up in opposition to the budget. And as a result, the, the budget didn't, it passed, but it did not pass by the wide margin that it usually passes by. And so I'm not really confident that. That an override is going to pass next year. So I think, given that we don't always have the support of the members of the committees, even when we think we do. I think we really need to be careful to make sure that we're prepared for as long as we can be. That's my two cents and I would really like to hear from all of the members of the school committee. Teresa.
Okay, thank you Pam, thank you. Last week, when you presented a really strong package of reductions. I anticipated a, a different response from Essex based on what we had been doing and the discussions that we had. And so when we left last week, you asked specifically, what do you want me to present? What, you know, what do you want us to look at? And, and in these cuts, what do you want us to consider? And my ask from last week was without cutting, without using more reserves, not reserves. I want to know what this has to look like, if we need to protect what we have, knowing that an override may not pass. I'm not really inclined to go dipping into more of our reserves at this point. And so you've done that and, and helps us understand what that might look like. The restructuring that. That is discussed in, when Pam says it versus when sometimes I hear parents use that word. Sometimes might mean, mean different things, but I think there've been some creative. Options put forth of ideas that could potentially come to fruition in terms of restructuring. But all of them are going to require some breathing room. And right now we don't have breathing room. So the, as Sarah just, just pointed out. I'm going to point it out in a slightly different way. The one thing that we've been missing from this process so far. Is, is some actual discussion among us, the actual school committee members who have to make the final decision on this. So I just want to see if I can frame some of this. All of these cuts that have come from the initial budget presented in December. Have come at this point at the request of our Essex leadership by way of the finance committee and board of selectmen representatives. And our town administrator in our collaboration meeting. But I'm not hearing any of these cuts being requested by the families that I interact with outside of families who are actually sitting on those boards. So correct me if I'm wrong here Pam. We could, as a school committee, discuss all of this, remembering that we have two towns involved here. And we could make a decision to support the original budget that you put forth in December. With the original amount of money in it, knowing that things will change based on, you know, some of those were estimates and that sort of thing. We could decide to go forward with the budget that was presented last week after a series of cuts, a considerable amount of cuts. But that wasn't really that well received by the people requesting them. Or we could decide to continue forward and adopt these cuts. As presented tonight, which definitely impact families that, that students are going to feel for sure. Am I framing this right, that those are some of our options? Or we could, we could choose to ask you to use more reserves and do such a thing if we wish to do that. And if that's the case, what I'm hoping we do tonight is really talk as committee members. Cause that discussion is the part that we've been missing. I've been in so many meetings with, with all of us who are talking about numbers, but not our actual committee. Is that a reasonable assessment of where we're at?
That's very reasonable and I would say if you ask me for a recommendation tonight, I'm not even, I'm not there yet.
Yeah.
We kind of spent some time putting together what it could look like, getting us excited honestly about some of the restructuring items. Even decided to talk to maybe our neighbors about, is there something totally out of the box we can do that helps more than just Manchester and Essex? But if I'm looking at the top of the list, those are just, they're all pain points. They're all, they're all undesirable, they're all. Depending on your lens, some are more palatable than others, but none of them are the conversation that we want to be having right now. So I don't even know where I stand on recommending which of these, which is the best direction. So I need a little time to digest on that and we have the time. Your budget adoption goes through on the 15th, we can always go lower, right? So if December 15th was those, the high watermark, January should be a closer representation of where we think we'll land. But the actual, how we actually get to whatever the number is on the 15th doesn't have to be determined until March.
So yeah, so then tonight, so. Committee members, like, can we just talk about this? How are other people feeling? People hear how I'm feeling, how are you guys feeling about this?
So Teresa and everyone, this is Eric and I do, I just have a brief comment and I think that was very well said and well asked. I keep coming back to the fact that I totally understand the financial impacts to the town. But where we don't have any idea of what the lasting effects of COVID are going to be. I just think it's a big mistake to make big cuts to the budget right now. So it's not a great situation for anyone, but I just think it's a mistake. If we're going to cut, you know, a million dollars from the budget. That's going to have long lasting effects on top of the long lasting effects that we're dealing, we're going to be dealing with. With the gap in education, so just my thoughts.
Yeah, I'll give my two cents similar to Eric, sitting, sitting in a room with this, with a different school leadership as well. I mean, Sarah, I kind of, I kind of chuckled, it's like we're in a different place with COVID. It's like, well, in schools, it doesn't really feel that way. It's, you know, you sit, you sit in these leadership meetings at schools and it's, you know, how do we, how do we stop teachers from resigning? How do we pay for high quality teachers? How do we improve our facilities? How do we get nurses to stay and retain? How do we improve our technology? And you keep on trying to think of creative solutions and I, I'm kind of at the point now where it's money. The answer is money. The federal government has recognized that through some of the ESSER funding, the states recognize that. Schools need funding right now more than anything. They don't need creative solutions, they need the resources they need to do the job right now. Because probably outside of hospitals, I don't see anything that's, as it has had a bigger impact than schools over the past two years with the pandemic. So. And I mean, and also sitting on some of the Friday collaboration meetings, you know, this, a reoccurring theme has been this topic. And it's also been that this wasn't the topic, I mean, this, this probably predates me. But when the, when the assessments to Manchester were higher, it wasn't as big of a conversation. And I understand that that's changed and it's always worth, Pam, to your point, looking, looking at things from an efficiency standpoint. Whether that's bus routes or leadership models to see if there's an efficiency, but. Cutting is not the right thing to be doing right now in schools. It's actually the exact opposite of what should be happening in schools right now. So I guess Teresa, to your point, the original budget that's on the table, I, I think that absolutely should be on the table. Because I think any cuts to the budget that are just arbitrary for town funding is, is a mistake.
I'm going to echo what I've heard from most of the other committee members, which is that I think it's irresponsible for us to be drawing from reserves right now. I think the future is really unknown, both about, in terms of the COVID situation, but also in terms of our town's direction. And which direction various committees from our town are going to choose to take when it is time for an override. I also think that it's really important that we remember that we are a regional committee. And so. You know, as valuable as it is to hear from each member town individually, we, we are here to make decisions. That are in the best interest of our district as a regional school district. I have significant concerns about making cuts that would potentially impact. Manchester Elementary more than Essex Elementary. Especially knowing that we are going to be coming to Manchester in, in the next, hopefully near future. And asking them to approve funding for a new Essex Elementary School. You know, it goes both ways, so we need to be supporting our member towns. And we need to remember that we are a regional school committee and we're acting in the best interests of the region. Not necessarily in the best interests of a town as an individual.
I think there's a call in user who's not muted. Ken, did you want to weigh in or Chris, I don't really think we've heard from either of you.
Chris go first. Sure Ken. You know, so being new to the school committee and I'll try and keep this short too. So I, I very much understand that there are always going to be competing interests when it comes to, you know, especially something like this, like the budget. You know, I understand that there are interests from each of the towns at our district. And I understand that there's, you know, potentially a, a different interest from the district itself. You know, an interest from families that live in both towns that have children in the school system as well as families that don't have children in the school system. I understand that it is a big part of each town's budget. So, you know, one of the things when I decided to run for school committee was. You know, hopefully I would have the ability to, you know, just add some of, you know, my opinions. I'm not a, you know, career educator, you know, I haven't been in the educational space for, you know, years or anything like that. You know, my, everything that I've been listening to her so far. You know, we originally talked and, and this has been mentioned multiple times that we talked about. Keeping our budget increase flat at, at three and a half percent, right? And, and that's been our goal. You know, and we did come to that initially and, and brought that forward. I think that where we've run into a major challenge here is. On the expectations that were set, you know, maybe with, you know, between the school committee and the town of Essex. You know, their board of selectmen and finance committee. You know, I'm, I'm not sure really where those, those expectations maybe either weren't correctly assessed. Or maybe it's simply the expectations changed on one end. But, you know, I couldn't agree more that when we have to start to take these cuts, when it's. You know, one town asking to stay within 5%, even though their. You know, their apportionment is going up, that just doesn't seem even realistic to me. So, you know, I, I think, you know, if I could make a suggestion. And this isn't just for, you know, this budget season, but moving forward. I, I think everyone in, in both towns needs to understand, you know, how these budgets do change. And even though, you know, I think it's only fair to all of our constituents that, you know, we do the best job we can to make sure that. Those expectations are set accurately, you know, that we will keep the budget within three and a half percent, you know, in, in all that we can do there. But if you have, you know, a higher percentage of, you know, allotment for, for your students, then that's not going to be realistic, right? So, you know, that, that's one thing I would request throughout all of this is that, you know, we all maybe do a bit of a better job setting expectations. You know, with all of our constituents. You know, as far as I can see here, you know, I, I do think Pam, that you've done a great job of looking at potential efficiencies. You know, from everything that I hear, we've been looking at efficiencies and, and looking at, at better ways to. Run the district with less for the past eight years now, which seems to me like a quite a long time. You know, so if I had to, you know, again, I, I'm new to this, but if I had to, you know, on the surface, when I look at this. I think it's also, you know, very dangerous to be cutting funds at this point. And, and even, you know, in the short term, one of the things I was really impressed about was how we were. We had saved a significant amount of money on the new memorial school project due to the fact that we had, you know, a really solid credit rating. You know, that saved us millions upon millions of dollars. And the reason why we have a good credit rating is for, you know, two things. One, because we do have strong reserves or at least did when that project was going through. And, you know, it sounds like we may not anymore if we start to take some of these cuts or use our reserves. And then secondly, because we did have strong support from, you know, both of our district towns, which, you know, I think is incredibly important as well. So, you know, I, I'm not sure where I stand on this as a final part, but, you know, on, on the surface, it seems like it's. A pretty poor idea to, at, at this point in time, as Peach will mention with the pandemic, to be cutting services. I would, I would not be in favor of cutting services.
Ken, did you want to weigh in?
Did, thank you for giving me my moment of the microphone. I guess on this, two, two thoughts come to mind to summarize this. One is I've appreciated seeing how the collaboration has worked and there's really been a focus on long-term, long-term budgets. I like the reminder that we are district elected from Kate and that's really why we work together, I think, as part of the collaborative. And that's why I go back, I think it was three or four years, Pam will can correct me. Around when we first said, you know what, we're going to use 150,000 reserves to offset a $50,000 shortfall for Essex. And I think the collaboration, the spirit of that needs to continue with it, whether it's going through budget season or a town election. And if it isn't collaborative. And if it isn't collaborative, and if the mission of the, 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 the budget collaborative isn't about no surprises and isn't about, you know, and becomes completely year to year, what do we need to do each year, then kind of it's, I don't know if it, if it serves its purpose there. So if it's, if it's past, it's, it's huge. I don't think it's there yet, but we should be able to have discussions not only about this year's budget, but also firm up, hey, and lay the table if we do need to do an override for next year. So Andy's warning at the beginning about don't dip too far into reserves and then end up, you know, setting yourself with a starvation budget that doesn't, that carries on into FY twenty four. The other important thing I wanted to point is, most of us are here through the grace in support of our own local school, public school districts. So it's really important that we continue this. Um, Manchester Essex has an above average performance, but I think compared with our other local towns, um, we're probably, we're close to midpoint on the North Shore for at least our partner towns in terms of what our per student costs are. So I think it's, just by comparison, it's relatively well managed. So I guess I'd close this by saying, I, I like also Matt's points about the student needs are key. We're coming out of a very challenging time um with COVID. I hope we're coming out. And we need to, I've heard more from parents and teachers about how the community as a whole needs that support and stabilization and return to normal and trying to cut budgets and provide the services to keep us all together at the same time is, I wouldn't go too far with cutting. So thanks, Pam, for advocating for some, some more time to think about until our next meeting and for deciding. So that's my, that's why I'll yield the microphone. Sarah, thanks for.
Pam, um, what do you need from us tonight? Further discussion? We have, do we have another two weeks before we make a decision?
I need exactly what you're doing right now, which is you deliberating on what's our path forward.
Okay.
February fifteenth, we should be taking a vote to adopt a budget to send to the towns. Um, my understanding is that we can always come down from what what that budget number is. We typically don't go up. That's why, like, when I went back through the history, that insurance hit that we took, those insurance numbers come in April. So if our insurance comes in higher in April and we've passed on a budget of, let's say we pass on the budget that we came up with last week, anything that happens after that is going to be on us to manage. So my long way of saying is, keep deliberating. We need to make a determination about what to put forward on the fifteenth. And that should be a high watermark, if you still want to consider further ways to reduce the numbers we can.
Even in the very first budget that you recommended, we were using a million dollars out of reserves. And even if we went, even if we said, go back to that first budget, because it had the least number the, it had the least pain for our students. That one takes, that one took a million dollars out of reserves. Um, and then the, the second one, instead of, it took a little bit less out of reserves, but we absorbed more sort of risk. And then tonight, what we have is more cuts, which is a kind of um, a medium, because we're still absorbing risk and we're still using reserves, but we're taking a little bit less so that um, so that we're an override to not pass in twenty four, it gives us a little bit of a cushion to get by. Is Ed, am I saying all that right? I just want to make sure. All right, um, I think people still have Yeah, just trying to balance it. I, I do think that the cuts you were able to come up with, I think, um, for the, well for the most part, aren't going to be dramatically impacting our ability to address the COVID needs of the students. Like the post, hopefully the post COVID needs of.
My first instinct is I really would hold as long as, if we find ourselves going down the cut path, the classroom teacher cut is one we, I would want to watch very late into the season to make sure we don't get an enrollment bump.
Well, yeah. Shannon and Caroline aren't on the committee anymore, but they always used to talk about how once you build a new building and add a bunch of school choice kids, you immediately get a whole bunch of move-ins. And so I don't know what's happening. Um, but I think that, you know, a few families moving to Manchester to enjoy that beautiful new school is a definite possibility that we need to keep in mind. Um, I, I know that the committee is not done discussing. So Teresa, did you have your hand up?
I did. So on that note of, of continuing discussing, um it's, it's hard to do. We haven't had a chance to do a lot of this, because we're not sitting around a table shooting ideas off each other and and having a back and forth. So it is difficult in a, in a virtual format, but um, I'd really love to start to get a sense on, on our committee where we all stand on this idea of cutting uh, into the program versus using reserves and and how we feel as a committee about reserve use and what level of reserve use we're comfortable with, as an example. Um, I, I know that Pam and Avi have been doing their best to come up with ways to make this palatable, you know, o- over this last two month or last month and a half or so um for our member towns. But taking special education, you know, out of district costs, out of our operational budget, it is part of our operational budget. It just means we're committing to use reserves. So we're not actually solving anything there, and I don't I, I don't know that I'm good with calling that a reserve use, you know, or or committing reserve funds to that in that, in that same way. So I'm just interested to see how other people are feeling about um, about our reserve use right now, because that's going to impact this as well.
Yeah, who has thoughts? I'll share my thought. My thought is that I don't feel a hundred percent confident that we're going to be able to pass an override in twenty four and that we should use less of our reserves. And I learned that message from Annie um years ago, actually, when we took that initial three hundred thousand dollars out of the budget. And now I've seen it carry forward. So as the uh, oh gosh, I think I am. I'm not only the most senior school committee member, but I'm definitely the oldest school committee member. So um, I will say with my age and experience, I can say that I am not in favor of using any more reserves than we absolutely have to. And so as painful as it is, and as many times as I've sat in front of the school committee and begged and screamed not to cut anything, I, I am now feeling like we need to make some cuts to alleviate our reserve use, just to plan for the future. And um, you know, I, my, my very sincere hope is that we will then pass an override that, that, that people will really come out, that the parents will come out, that community members will support the schools, that people will let their elected officials and their appointed officials know what they are really wanting, because I don't think that our town governors are hearing um from their constituents. I think they're hearing from a few people who want cuts and want the school to cost less. And I think they need to hear from the people who want the schools to do as much as the schools possibly can do. Um, so I think that there's a chance by, that by making some cuts now and spending the time for people to really understand, um, perhaps we could get an override that doesn't just plug the gap. But perhaps we would end up going for an override that puts back all of those things and maybe even allows the district to do some of the work that it's been hoping to do, um, you know, thinking about the new strategic plan. And I know that not all of those things cost money. I know Jake was here last week talking about how, you know, some of our strategic plan can be implemented without lots of money. And sometimes it's creative restructuring or thinking about things in a different way and not always just throwing money at a problem. We haven't been throwing out of money at a problem since I've been on the school committee. We've been taking, scraping money off the, just like when you're at the bottom of your peanut butter jar and you're just trying to get the last little bit out of there with your spoon. So, um, I, I would say, I think, um, I would advocate for making some cuts now and using less reserves. But I am only one member of seven.
Can I add one thing, Sarah, as we, as we talk about this too, just to, just because we've, you know, tonight and this season, right now, it's on Essex's shoulder and and Essex is doing that. And I've been vocal within my own, you know, within collaboration group as the Essex representative, that I'm not in favor of, of all of this, um, the way this is going. But this is a historical process, and there have been times when it was the other way around. And when Essex really came to the table and 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 found ways to work, but in the collaboration group, that was the relationship that they had. But, you know, as, as late as, I want to say it was last year when we were dealing with COVID stuff, Manchester had an ask for us to use more reserves. And Essex came to the table saying, hey, we're ready to pay our bill. And, and we as a committee said, no, we're not using more reserves than that, just to keep. So, so there is a give and take here, and there's a history. But right now, we're just at such a critical time that I think we really need to decide how we're handling this in terms of a bigger picture of, of reserves. And I just don't have a sense of us as a team, of people, where we're at with, with this sort of thing.
Um, I have something a little, a little separate to bring up. Uh, you know, Pam, you mentioned this about insurance costs and the fact that we won't know what those will be. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm pretty confident, you know, insurance companies aren't in the business of losing money, and they've had to fork over a lot of extra costs due to COVID. Uh, that's going to, like, that, that bill is going to come due to consumers, including our costs. I don't see, I mean, I, I'm not sure what is in the budget for an expected increase in insurance costs, but I would be highly concerned that that's going to be even greater than, you know, we have budgeted today, so.
And that's what we're signaling, and Avi's been reminding me of. Avi, are we carrying nine right now or ten?
Ten percent rate increase is the budgetary estimate, and uh, as Pam alluded to uh earlier. Uh, the utilization, much to your point, Chris, is, has definitely rebounded from we had a, a stretch where things were suppressed when people weren't going to the doctors as much, and that's coming back. But I think we also, to your point, have not fully seen how the carriers um costs will come through regardless of just utilization, but in forecasted increases for things they might have had to pick up. So I do think um, it's not an area, you know, there's some years where I'm saying I think we can gain some points here and have some flexibility, and then we've debated how to use that, and we've split it between maybe lowering reserves or lowering assessments. Right now, I think it's premature to change that number. And I would be the first person to say, hey, we've got flexibility there. I'm just not seeing it in the month to month uh, numbers as our utilization has ticked up somewhat uh from.
Uh-oh. We lost you for a little second at the end after you said somewhat.
From even two months ago.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else? I feel like you of us have weighed in. It's getting, it's seven forty-five. We did say that we'd end at seven thirty to go into our executive session. We will have another opportunity to discuss this again in two weeks before we make our final um, decision. But before we do, is there anybody else who'd like to share any last thoughts? All right. I guess that's all the discussion you're going to hear from us on this tonight, Pam. Um, so, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for listening, and um, please feel free to reach out with uh, emails and letters to us or your um, other representation. Um, if you have thoughts to share, and uh I, I feel like it sounds so horrible, but I think it's going to be okay. If, if we end up having to make some cuts this year, it'll be okay. And if we can pass the override again next year, that will be fine. And if we can pass the override for even a little bit more to get the schools that everybody is really dreaming of, then that is like the pot of gold that we can all think about. So, um, some things to think about for the future. All right, Pam, I mean, we need you to send us a link for our executive session.
I think we can do it right here if you want to vote us into executive session, and then I can just clean out the participant list, and I just have a, a quick question for the team to confirm something, and I think we could be done in fifteen minutes.
Okay, um, so do I have a motion to move to executive session?
It's a safe for the purpose of, I think.
Oh, uh, to move to the executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation discussion. Thanks, Teresa. Is there a second?
Second, Warnock.
All right, Eric?
Yes.
Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Matt?
I sent you, oh wait, I was, yes.
Oh, I did. Oh, that says, you know what? That says me at the bottom of my list, but I, my eyes are tired and I can't read anymore. So I'm, I'm also a yes, as well as Matt, whose name also starts with M. All right, so we just need to clean out the participant list, and then we can have our executive session right here without having to even.
So can we just ask that if you have attended the formal meeting, now is the time we're going to need you to sign off? And I'm going.